Next, we have our first information item Superintendent Update, Dr. Swift.
Thank you, President Johnson and trustees and members of the community. We will share the superintendent update this evening in really two key and critical areas. One is to update on our current work that we have in progress in the district. Just a few highlights on that, of course, not a comprehensive update. And then secondly, as we shared earlier, we'll share more information on the school age childcare. Certainly, we're delighted to have our students of those families who've made that choice to return to our buildings. We are moving forward with that as well as with our students and families who've chosen to complete the school year in that virtual situation as well. We're out in schools and I have seen learning occurring both in person and with zoomies, roomies and zoomies as we walk through. You can see here Ms. Christensen's class at Hazely Elementary. I appreciate that they were taking social distancing seriously in that photo and appreciate that they were enjoying the nice weather. Work ongoing at Wines and Carpenter here, as well as Abbott students helped plant a tree in memory of Mr. Steve, our teacher, who passed away. And that's a beautiful commemorative stone. You can see that they laid there as well. Eberwhite, just a shot there you can see of the zoomies joining on the screen as well as a photo from home. We have lots of activity going on to wrap up this school year. Transition enclosure for our students, our middle level students were in transition activities today. Trustees and I did see comments from parents and from teachers regarding how those transition activities went. Was delighted to see and hear eighth graders holding breakout sessions with the incoming sixth graders, fifth graders now and answering questions and making sure that everyone was included in those transition activities. We will also be doing transition activities in August because we realize that those are occurring virtually. We want to make sure that every student feels comfortable inside our school buildings. Our elementary, middle schools are making plans for their, their continuations. We call them not graduations, but continuations. They're doing all sorts of drive-through and socially distant sorts of activities to celebrate this finish to the school year and to make sure that our students are able to transition appropriately. Our commencement ceremonies, that planning moves forward every day. I appreciate the work of our high school teams. I receive updates on that daily. Our seniors will have their final day of classes, trustees, next Friday on the 28th of May. And then our commencement ceremonies will proceed beginning on June 1st with pathways and moving through June 8th at Skyline High School. You can see them listed there. They are also, those dates and times are listed on our website as well. Our summer food distribution is planning is well in progress. Ms. Margolis and our Chartwells and Durham team will continue that emergency food distribution into our community center areas and at many locations, schools and otherwise in the community. Trustees, we're delighted to share that that emergency food mechanism has been approved to continue through June of 2022. So we're very grateful that we'll be able to continue to share meals and food with our students and with their families throughout the coming school year with or without the paperwork or free and reduced lunch paperwork filed. So that is a really important development. Technology, as trustee Gainer noted, we have a lot of work going on with technology. You'll hear more about some of that later in the meeting. Those approximately 15,000 devices will need to be checked back in. So our principals and our ITD team are preparing for that process. Of course, if students are enrolled in summer learning, they may keep their devices and your school will send more information. Our ITD team is preparing for a just wall-to-wall summer as they refresh and renew those devices with all the right software. Our summer learning is launched, the enrollment is launched now. I'll share more info here shortly on that. Our team is busy working to design that A2 live online K5 programming now that will be available in the fall. We're excited to have that program open and yet we understand there's a lot of work involved in that. On a much deeper level, I appreciate that principals and our school teams and all of us are really connecting regularly across our team on how we move forward from this COVID year. And we'll be sharing more information to hear from our parents and our students and our staff on that topic. I appreciated one teacher who used the word soul with regard to just looking at how we will come together, much more than the physico logistics, but how we will come together to move forward from this COVID year. We continue our, as trustee Lazarus noted, we continue with our 2019 bond program, spring community updates. We completed a number of meetings in February and March with our environmental groups. And now trustees were about halfway through our May tour of community meetings, meeting with community groups. Three meetings have occurred in the last couple of days. And then we'll be moving forward. If you've not had a chance to join us, next Tuesday morning, we'll be sharing that link in our weekly update. And it's on our website as well for members of the community. 8:00 AM Tuesday morning and then Tuesday evening for a number of community organizations. And then Thursday at noon, we've tried throughout this tour to hit on all different times of the day. And yet, Mr. Cluley will make sure that the videotape of that session is available on the website following these two general sessions this week. So anyone who would like to watch it on demand, at the end of those sessions, we're inviting our community members, our parents, our students, our staff to participate in a thought exchange so that we're able to see your thoughts, not only to see the thoughts that you have, but to see how those thoughts resonate among everyone who's responding. So that is the update on our bond information. Enrollment continues on our summer learning program. As you can see, one more slide on Slide 12. We have approximately 1,000 students enrolled at the elementary level, about the same number of students in grades six through 12. We have a little more than 500 students already signed up for our special needs programming and support services. And then about 120 students are engaged in our English language learner programs. I did hear, we listened very closely and take notes of the person who said they were having difficulty getting into a summer program and we will follow up with you because we are still enrolling. And with very few exceptions, we do still have slots available in most every one of those programs. So, and I just want to give a shout out to our teachers and our staff. I know this has been a long year for everyone and I appreciate every staff member, principal and teachers and support staff who have stepped up to work this year so that we have summer opportunities. We also have our summer camp enrollment that continues. Ms. Bacalor reports that we do still have some openings there. I believe Safety Town is really filled to overflowing, but I think in most other opportunities, we do have those programs planned from the Monday after we finish the school year, all the way through August 27th. So right through the end of the summer, those programs are offered consistently. We know that we experienced a great progress in the approval of the vaccine for 12 to 15-year-olds last week. And I just want to give a shout out trustees that the vaccination clinic for tomorrow, May 20th at Huron, trustees and members of the community, we have just a few appointments remaining. And those are open now to 12 to 15-year-olds as well as 16 and above. So if you would like to, it's right on our website or on Washtenaw County website. You can go right on there and still sign up for tomorrow if you'd like to get that vaccination going. We also will continue to have again this Saturday, our testing, COVID testing site at Huron High School. And we will continue that both tomorrow and then also on one more weekend day coming up. I think it's May 30th, we're about to get there. So our back to school on August 30th. Just a couple of updates here. I've left all of the slides in because folks certainly may not have seen our two prior updates on the 2021 school, I'm sorry, 2122 school year. But just a couple of things to remind folks of. We are continuing the Thursday evening sessions. Those sessions are available at any time, on demand for you to view. They are on our website right under, right in the area of our 2122 information. We have two more of those sessions coming up on the 20th of May and the 27th of May. In this week, we'll be highlighting a little bit more information, detailed information about fall, including the thought exchange questions. That survey will be open because we want to leave it open for a couple of weeks so that our parents and our students and our staff have time to weigh in and give their thoughts and feedback. And then also the InfoSnap registration. So I just want to share a little bit on that trustees. The thought exchange questions are questions we've been working with all spring. What are the priorities that you are thinking about, that you're considering as we approach this re-engagement, school year 2122? And certainly, we've heard from so many this evening about the priority of before and after care. We definitely understand that and share that concern. Secondly, we're asking folks to comment on what innovations that we've used this past year that perhaps your thinking would make us stronger. And those are the innovations that you think you'd like to keep. We are providing a little bit of a starter list of those, but we hope you'll write in as many as you think of that you would like for your child or your family to continue to have. And then the third question is just that spot for any other thoughts that you would like for us to have in the considerations of the school year ahead, 2122. Now that's the thought exchange. The second component that our parents will receive here during May is the InfoSnap registration. As a reminder, this is the way that our parents reserve a seat in the Ann Arbor Public Schools for fall, for the school year 2122. Right now, to date, our enrollment is running a little bit ahead of schedule. We have more students than we normally have at this time of year. And just a reminder of what that InfoSnap will ask you for. At elementary, it will ask you to choose your, the choice of in-person school in the school building. Secondly, of that A2 live online, that is the live synchronous with our Ann Arbor Public Schools teachers. That is the approach for those that want to be connected to a classroom on Zoom, very similar to how we are now. The third choice is that A2 virtual. We call it A2VE. This is the independent where students work at their own pace. They do have an Ann Arbor Public Schools quality teacher that, who supports them weekly. But this third option is the option without the required classroom Zoom structure. So those are the three choices at elementary. Then at secondary, the InfoSnap form will look like this. Of course, those parents who've been with us know that when you go into InfoSnap, the, the other tasks are to update any address change or phone numbers or emergency contacts. But in that process, we're also asking for your indication at this time of your preferred program for fall of 21. This will help us to staff and to prepare for all buildings and all programs that we're offering. The choices at secondary are that in-person school, five days per week. In our middle and high schools and K8s, we feel like most of our secondary, parents of secondary students will likely choose that option from what we're hearing. We will also offer the A2 virtual in addition to the in-person learning. And we know that, I was by Forsyth the other day and saw some students who were engaged in their A2 virtual during the hour when they take a virtual class in lieu of the in-person school class. So that has occurred for years. That is not anything new, but we're asking you to check if that is your preference. And then the third option would be for those students and families who want to remain fully virtual next year. And that is the A2 virtual asynchronous where the student works at their own pace with student, with teacher support weekly. As I shared, we won't go through all of the fall information this evening trustees in the interest of time. We have been through them at last week's meeting and we shared them in the Friday update, superintendent's update. We laid all of this out with links to the online information. And of course, for anyone who asks questions, we'll be happy. Just give your principal an email or email any of us, we'll be happy to assist you. We will be offering a full five-day-per-week in-school learning with our quality teachers and support staff and leaders. That is early childhood through 12th grade. Just a couple of quick notes, there is no hybrid instruction as a part of the 2122 school year plan. And then also, we want to mention that all of our virtual, all of our preschool, and we serve hundreds of preschool students. Our preschool programs will be open in the fall and we will not be offering a virtual preschool option. So in short, our academic, performing in visual arts and sciences, our athletic and extracurricular, International Baccalaureate theme, Project Lead the Way, World Languages, Environmental Education, Reckon Ed, Science Libriag, Robotics, Orchestra Night, all of these programs returning to full operation. Just want to share that we continue the downward trend on our COVID community level of spread. And that update is posted on our website every week, but we always include it here. And then the drive-through PCR saliva testing is Saturday, May 22nd. And that is 12:00 noon to 3:00 PM. Many of our families have used that, our students and families, particularly those who are not able to be vaccinated yet, have found that to be helpful and will continue to offer that. Trustees, last week in our desire to share about the fall opening and to share that we would be fully open, all systems returning to full operations. I agree with President Johnson. Normally, we like to share more information ahead of time, but there was a sense of urgency that we didn't want to lead off with the message of open for full operations when we were aware of a particular challenge that we're facing. So we've shared a briefing with the board. We have those documents available. I'll be sharing them as well with our parents and community. And they are public on the, on the board docs now. But we did share last week and our desire to let our parents know it has been a challenging year for our students, for our parents, for our staff and for our community. And we understand the challenge of this before and after care situation. And yet, we feel that it would be the worst thing to set an expectation that in reopening to full operation, we would also be able to reopen to full operation in this area because there are two specific components that are challenges that we don't yet know the answer to. So we have used a large group model for childcare. This means anywhere from 40 to 100-plus students together in school spaces such as the cafeteria or the gym. When the weather is nice, of course, students and everyone loves to be outdoors. What we know is that while many people are celebrating that the masks can come off and the vaccinations have increased, the percentage of folks vaccinated, what we do know is there are children under the age of 12 will not be able to be vaccinated at the beginning of this school year. So while we do not know the COVID requirements for health and safety that will be held accountable to, because we are going to practice those CDC protocols, we don't know what those are yet. What we do know is that without vaccination, large groups of students together is not a model that will be healthy and safe for our youngest children. Other COVID relating, related needs would include having nurses on call, in-contact tracing teams available. Extending that school day by two hours will mean that there will be a need for those various support services, including our health room that we feature in every school and the challenges that go along with that. We also understand that it is very likely that we will need to continue the cohort model. Several of our public commenters referenced that this evening. We've been very meticulous in following the best version of the cohort model that we can. And we do understand that it will be a challenge to mix together grades in different groups of students for two hours after school. I think it goes without saying, but just to be clear, none of us wants anything to threaten or impact our ability to conduct our school day safely. So whatever arrangements we're looking at and able to make, one of the fundamental priorities is that we need to maintain that COVID health and safety so that our elementary students can be fully in school, five days per week for full days. We appreciate in Ann Arbor that we always receive outreach of support, offer of volunteers. It's truly special in this community that people want to reach out and help. But I will remind folks that as a school, we are heavily regulated in the offering of childcare after school. And even with a barn-raising kind of effort of volunteers, that does not change the ratio requirements, the health and safety requirements that we are held to. So it is true, our speakers spoke of it this evening, that our Ann Arbor Public Schools School Age Childcare Program has operated successfully in the Ann Arbor Public Schools for many years. It is a pride point of this community and we take the operation of that program very, very seriously. There are several components that make this program different from other programs out in the community. And this is a part of the consideration. Several folks mentioned it, it's an affordable price. We have provided scholarships. In the last full school year, we had 2018, 19, 158. Of our 1,301 students enrolled, approximately 12% were partially to fully scholarshiped in this program. We're proud of our caring and competent childcare staff. And we know that the location in the school is just the best in terms of meeting our student and parent and family needs. Our team consists of approximately 75 childcare workers. They serve 1,301 students across 18 elementary school buildings and K8 school buildings. Our childcare staff are employees of the Ann Arbor Public Schools. And that means that they have contributions to retirement, paid time off. And it does not mean that, we certainly aren't pretending that we wouldn't want to pay folks more. Certainly, we understand that concern and yet they are full employees with all of those associated benefits. Over previous years, the increasing demand and a decreasing pool of qualified applicants have created serious challenges for our program. And in the fall of 2019, we suffered several weeks of our parents, many parents being on wait lists and the inability to fully open our program on time in the fall of 2019. Following that difficulty at that time, we conducted, Ms. Bacalor and her team conducted a full analysis of childcare programming in public school systems across Southeast Michigan. Ms. Bacalor has shared that information. She'll be joining us in a few moments if the trustees want to discuss more specific details. And all five of the most close comparison districts were facing the very same challenges of staffing and unfilled positions and wait lists for childcare. So three significant differences. One is the size and scale of our large One is the size and scale of our large groups across 18 buildings. Our COVID health concerns and the importance potentially of cohorting, although it is too soon to know the exact COVID requirements of fall. And then thirdly, that we have offered and will continue to offer special education support in the, in the way of teacher assistance for our students who have those during the day and special needs assistance. I do not know of any other programs that have offered this level of support. And certainly, it is our desire to be able to continue to do that. And yet, I want to be clear, trustees and community, we never want to not give parents the right in most time we can when we see an issue arising. So that was our intention last week, was so that our parents would be absolutely aware that at this moment, now today, there are concerns that would prevent the full reopening of our before and after care. And we take the responsibility we have very seriously. And that was our reason for giving our parents that flag and that concern. So here's what we're committing to do now. We will continue to monitor the COVID health and safety requirements. We meet several times a week with Washtenaw County Health Department. In fact, I meet with them, or we have connections with them again tomorrow. And we will stay abreast of what the requirements are for large groups of unvaccinated young children indoors for this fall. We won't likely know those guidelines specifically for a little while yet, but we will continue to plan and to monitor those arrangements, those situations. Secondly, we will continue, as I've shared with the trustees, to vigorously recruit childcare applicants. That process will continue and we will monitor to see if the childcare workforce rebounds. It has been a challenge for school districts and for daycare institutions across the country during COVID, and it is a continuing challenge. We will continue to evaluate and to work on the feasibility and the timing of any possible reopening of small childcare programming. When we are able to, we will rebuild on the strength and the tradition of this long-valued Ann Arbor Public Schools childcare program. We understand the needs of children and our families. And any indication that we make this decision lightly or without understanding the terrible distress of our families is completely wrong. And yet, this is another of several excruciating decisions and situations that we have faced. So we understand the needs of working families and of our children. We know the tremendous advantage of an in-school program in Ann Arbor. That is our tradition and at the right time, we will return to that. And yet, we feel it is the most inappropriate thing to signal to our parents in our community that at this time, our parents should plan for non-AAPS arrangements for the 2122 school year. As we're able to share information any different from that, we will absolutely do that as quickly as we can. With that, trustees, that wraps the superintendent's update. Thank you, President Johnson and trustees.